Good evening, everybody. I would like to call this meeting Southern Shores Planning Board, November 18th, 2024, to order, please. If you will all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We've got a little bit of change in the agenda. Add in the the consideration of the order for case VA-24-01. I would like to put that after approval of minutes, so that would be item five. And public comment would move down and become six, and the rest of them would be ordered in the same way, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Anyway, can I get a motion to amend tonight's agenda with that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda for November 18th, 2024, to include in at the approval of minutes, after the approval of minutes, case number VA-24-01, Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, Tony. Can I get a second for that?
One second.
Thank you, Jan. Any discussion? All in favor of that change in minute or agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None seen? Okay. So that change has been made, and we've approved the agenda for tonight. So we'll move on to approval of two sets of minutes that we have, May 15, 2023, and then July 15, 2024. We were given the the May 15, 2023 minutes at our last meeting. So you should have them, they're lengthy. I've noted a few things, typo here or there, but does anyone have any corrections to those minutes that you'd like to bring out? Well, I wrote down on line 346. Yeah, the May meeting, on line 346. The last word in 346 should be planning rather than playing. And then 1,084. I'm not quite sure that it would be worded exactly like that. Does anybody have any?
What line?
1,084. Planning Director Wes Haskett stated, staff looked into the possibility of creating nonconformities, and I'm not aware of any, I guess you would say. And he said he was not aware of any. Just a little syntax there. And then also on line 1089 and 1090. I think that needs to get cleaned up in language a little bit as well. I'm not quite sure what exactly that meant, but anyway. 1130. Line 1130 probably needs to be reordered from 1130 to 1134. Starting with Chairperson Ward called for a vote, the motion passed unanimously for zero. And then below it, it says the same thing. So let's see where that is, Wes.
See, 1130, where it says Chairperson Ward called for a vote.
Yeah.
So you say lines 1132 through 1134 should go in front of 1130?
Yeah, I would probably get rid of line 1130 and just bring that 1132 motion up.
Okay.
It says the same thing twice. And then finally, for me, on 12, line 1263, public comment is none rather than no. Anybody else spy anything that needs to be since rim? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the May 15, 2023 minutes as corrected?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 15, 2023 minutes as corrected.
Thank you, Tony. Ed, second? Yeah. Ed, seconds? Any heartburn on that? All in favor of approving those minutes? Raise your hand, please.
Aye.
None? Okay, moving on to the July 15, 2024 corrections. Sheila had sent them out this weekend, and I mean, they look pretty good. I mean, I made two corrections for Sheila. One was line 106, which has the word lax. It should be L-A-C-K-S, lax. And then the on line 135. I'm not sure if hosted is the right word. Just curious about that, but I mean, it sounds good. But I would maybe change that to something else besides hosted.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we do appreciate being hosted here on a monthly basis, but I think that might be the wrong word in there. Held. Okay. Can I get a motion to? Anybody else have anything? Michael?
I just pointed out to Wes and Sheila earlier, line 87, just Town Planning Director Wes Haskett.
Line 87? Anybody else? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the July 15, 2024 minutes, please?
I've got a motion.
Jan? Thank you.
I'll second it.
Ed, second.
Good.
Okay, Jan and Ed. All in favor of Jan's motion to accept the minutes with corrections? Please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. Get that out of the way. Item five in the the new agenda would be to add in there, and it would be the consideration of the order for case VA-24-01. You all have received the order and hopefully have read it, and I just, I've been back and forth with our attorney Jay Willis on this earlier today, and I asked him to give me a brief statement as to his examination of this document. So I'm going to read that to you, what Jay Willis, our attorney for the Board of Adjustment, sent to me today at 1:43 PM. Chairman Ward, I have reviewed the town's proposed order, which combined the decisions regarding the motion to preclude and the application for variance. I have no objection to its substance. At tonight's meeting, a motion to approve and to authorize you to sign the order would be appropriate from one of the board members. A simple majority carries the decision. So at this point, no, I'm sorry, to finish, I will not be present, Jay. Any questions about Jay's statement to me? Okay. Okay. In order to move this from where we're at now to the finality of it on our end on the Board of Adjustment is I need a motion to approve the order that you have in front of you in the case of VA-24-01, and to authorize me as Chairman of the Board of Adjustment to sign the order.
So moved?
Thank you, Tony. Can I get a second? Ed? Thank you. Any discussions on that motion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, several of the members pointed out a typographical error. And if y'all wanted to approve it with that amendment?
Oh, yes. Good catch here, Wes. I would say that, Tony, you moved the motion. Would you like to speak to adding that one correction right on the very? It's the very last page.
Oh, yes.
Variance is misspelled.
Yeah. Again, variance on page nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On page nine, it reads, preclude an application for aryence. And I would like to amend that to spell it correctly as variance requests are denied.
Okay, so that would be added on to Tony's motion. And Ed's second. So I think we are ready for a vote on that. All in favor of Tony's motion? Raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None seen? And Wes, briefly, what happens next with the action that we just took here with the order?
Yes, sir. So we will have the attorney revise the document, and then I will contact you to come in and sign the document. And then we have to serve the applicant and the property owner who was not the applicant. Once service has been provided, that's when the 30-day shot clock starts for the applicant to appeal to the decision to Derek County Superior Court if they'd like to do so.
All right, thank you. Okay. At this point, I will ask for anybody signed up for public comment, please come forward. Don't all jump at once.
I think I signed up. Mark Martin, 191 Wax Myrtle Trail. I'm a builder in town, do most of my work in Southern Shores and Duck, a little bit in Corolla, some in Kitty Hawk and Agshead. Been building here since 96, and have sat on at least two different tree ordinance committees over the years. The first one way back right after I got here, about four or five years after I got here. And I remember walking into the first meeting, and everybody says, we got to save the trees. And the members that was appointed with me, he said, well, let's get a map out and see how many trees were here. And there's none here. But we had all these trees that have grown up since early, late 80s, early 90s. So we went through a whole process for quite a few months, and council never really did anything about it because they felt like the trees were growing, and it wasn't really an issue. And that's kind of happened continuing on, you know, through the years. So a little surprised we've got it on the residential stuff. I understand it a little bit on the commercial, but I don't really understand it on the unimproved lots. So just kind of want to get clarification as to why we're doing that. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me that as somebody who lives in the house in town, I could cut down almost every tree on my lot if I wanted to, but the guy next door who has a few trees, or he needs to cut down the setback or in the street, he can't do that unless he comes to get a lot disturbance permit, lot disturbance, stormwater management permit, which brings up a whole set of possible things that we would have to be doing, or that potential homeowner or property owner would have to be doing. Surveys, engineers getting involved, creating a stormwater plan just to cut down a tree. So seems like a lot of expense there that is probably unnecessary. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, next is Mark LeBlanc.
I'm sorry. I share Mark Martin's concerns. First of all, I'm not sure what the compelling need is for this regulation, given the paucity of unimproved lots. Second, both the comprehensive plan concerning the tree canopy in these ordinances would be better informed if they took into consideration fire-resistant landscape principles such as those issued by the NC State Cooperative Extension. I myself have taught a class in that, and I would say that the town, in fact, given its vegetation, it's the vegetation and the canopy's proximity to homes and its maintenance, that there's a major fire risk by the vegetation in this plan, and I submit that the town would be safer if consideration was given to thinning trees and vegetation, understory fuels, ladder fuels, and the like. As to the proposed text amendment, a tree emergency may also occur because of insect damage or disease or senescence. I'm not sure that the proposed language addresses that. It speaks to natural causes, but then uses as examples storm-related events. Echoing what Mr. Martin said, these kinds of regulations are divisive. With no intrinsic difference between two lots, it's the matter of when you did it. So you're either on this side, you did it before it became effective, or it didn't. It's another limitation on property lights and all, and with respect, it's just going to exacerbate divisions in the town. And I don't see the necessity for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Richard Filling.
Richard Filling, living in Southern Shores. I'd like to, I really just have a question and/or followed by a comment with the bill. I'd like to know if any consideration has been taken in with this regarding submittal of landscape plan by either a developer and/or property owner in association with the clearing of said trees in the bill. If not, I'd like to see that perhaps to take this maybe a little bit farther. Well, I'm sure my colleagues wouldn't like that, that Wes taking into consideration in cooperation with the planning board that developers and/or property owners possibly submit landscape plans that would remediate and/or take in the place of those trees that are being removed so that, you know, those tree canopies and or such can be considered taking that place in the future. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Right. Mr. Stone.
Mike Stone, I live in Southern Shores too. Now, you already know that we own about 30 properties in town. We've owned them for 40, 45 years, haven't developed them. We used to cut them years back, you know, but it was a long, drawn-out process to keep everything cut down with the bush hog. Trees grow very quickly. I have one example of where we used to have a fuel tank with a vent pipe that stuck up, you know, 10 feet in the air. Originally, that tree was only about this big around. Before I cut it down about 15, 20 years ago, it was wider than this and fully encompassed that vent pipe that it grew around. So trees grow very quickly, and the same tree also tore up the asphalt. So I had to rip it out of ground and put down some new asphalt and such where it's placed. But basically, what this ordinance is that they're talking about is it's the taking of someone else's land. We have, you know, there's a certain group is referred to tree hunters in the town, and they refer to a number of other things. They want to take someone else's right to use their land and tell them what they want to do. Now, a neighbor may not like someone cutting trees down on the property, but the fact is, the taller a tree is, the older it is, they get dead branches in them, top of them. You can't reach them with a pole saw and cut them down or anything like that, and they fall. Earlier this year, I had one fall probably within five feet of me, and if it would have hit me, it would have killed me. Now, it was a dead branch that I did not see. And it's happening all the time, and you can go to on the website where a woman in a park, where the park in DC maintained them and inspected the trees every year. A woman in July was killed by a branch falling out of a tree. So it happens a lot often, more often than people think. So there is that safety issue. The other issue is with insurance. I don't know about y'all. I deal with it a lot. Of insurance companies are canceling policies because of the trees next to homes with the branches over top of the homes and everything else. And the only way you can alleviate that is to move them away from the place. The other aspect is the zoning in Southern Shores used to have a 10-foot setback. It was changed to 15-foot setback. What was the excuse? For fire safety between houses and brush and other stuff. Now, you're asking for someone to build right, have the setback right next to their house and potentially not be able to do anything with it. I'm one that doesn't like leaves and grass, so. I'm against the order.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
I'm Michelle Youngstone. I lived at, I live at 56 Trinity Trail, and I'm pro this ordinance, and I just wanted to say a couple of things. My husband and I got to move here two and a half years ago from Collington Harbor, where there are no such ordinances. And we had initially moved there because we love trees. And we ended up, when we left, everything, like flooding there is rampant, in large part because you don't have the trees that create an ecosystem that allows that water to be reabsorbed. And when you argue things like trees are going to like get knocked down and kill people, and that's my property, what have you, you also have to take into consideration like the greater good, that one of the reasons Southern Shores is so well-loved and coveted as a neighborhood is because of those trees, because of the live oaks, because of the canopies, because historically, the neighborhood was designed around trees. The roads were shaped around the trees, not cut down to make way or et cetera. And after we moved in, well, first in Collington, one of the reasons we left was somebody chopped down all the live oaks in the house next to us. So we moved here, and we bought a lovely wooded lot, and we couldn't be happier. And then my neighbor across the street, who had moved in recently, took down three ginormous like live oaks in his yard. And I actually, because I wanted to be a good neighbor, I just went over and I asked him why he was doing it, and I tried to express like how, you know, trees emit oxygen and absorb carbon dioxide. That is one of the like, that's one of the things everyone I know who grew up in this neighborhood and everyone I talked to is like, that's the best place to live. It's the place everybody wants to live, and it's because of those trees and those trails. And he said, and I quote, "We don't like it because it's, the trees make debris, and it's making our concrete..." and it's making our concrete driveway stained and I keep having to clean it." So they took down every live oak in their yard and it literally looks like a parking lot. And my question to him, and I said this like very, very nicely, but my question to him is, if you want to live in a neighborhood that doesn't have trees and doesn't love and covet trees or you're driving into Chickahawk and you see like a leaf, go like live in a condominium if that's the way you want to live, if concrete's more important to you than trees. So I think that the statute's a good idea. NAGS had already has a statute that protects live oaks. Lots of different communities do. And I think like it's about time Southern Shores took this step. And I just wanted to be here because I want to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. What?
Is it the second round?
No, no, I'm just making sure, because ironically, I'm looking down and her name is Michelle Youngstone. And I'm thinking it's, is your middle name Mike? I mean, is your middle name Young? I didn't think so. Got you all confused. Anyway, thank you all for your comments. And we're going to move on with this meeting and discuss what you all are passionate about and see where we get. Right. Wes, can you give us a brief synopsis of why we are looking at, at the emergency tree removal language in there? I mean, you don't have to read the whole thing, but just if you can give us a brief synopsis of why we are looking at emergency tree removal is the bulk of our discussion tonight.
The, thank you and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The town currently has a requirement for lot disturbance stormwater management permit to remove trees in the commercial zoning district in a front or a side setback, rear setback area, unimproved lots. And during the discussion, not only the planning board, but also the town council, when they were discussing what's currently required, it was brought up that there should be some sort of provisions for emergency tree removal. And one of the speakers did bring up what I believe is a good point is if we are going to move forward with it, one of the exceptions does not take into account insect disease. So I think that was a good suggestion. But that's the main reason. The board and the town council both brought up concerns with not having some sort of exception in there. And whenever a, an emergency is deemed to exist, that would waive the requirement for a lot disturbance stormwater management permit or someone could come in within 72 hours of removal and reply, apply for a lot disturbance stormwater management permit retroactively.
Thank you, Wes. All right. Anybody want to lead us off in this discussion?
Oh, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I did want to add that these provisions came mostly from the Town of Ducks current requirements.
Okay. The tree emergency exception, which is on page three of the ZTA. Anybody got outside of possibly putting insect damage in there somewhere? Does anybody have any additions, subtraction? What's your thoughts on, on starting with item D, tree emergency exception?
I don't have a vote tonight, but on 1A, what you may want to consider is a tree has become an imminent danger or hazard to persons or property due to damage to the tree resulting from fire, motor vehicle accident or natural occurrence. I would bracket or put in parentheses and say IE lightning, windstorm, ice storm, flood or similar event. And then, you know, on the dead or dying, I would put that under C and just say the tree is dead or yeah, is dead or dying. Dying being the result of disease or pest.
So where would you put that?
I would under one, add a one C.
Okay.
You could.
Tree is dying. Any number of things would cause a tree to die.
But the natural occurrence, and you have such as lightning, but you could also bracket in that situation insects or disease. That is a natural occurrence. Or you could just add it again, but that is a natural occurrence.
I think one of the things you'll may want to consider though is, you know, you could have a pest infestation, you could have a disease that can be treated. And not every instance of those may require the tree to be removed.
I think though that if you got a homeowner and he doesn't want the tree, the tree's dying from a curable insect infestation, does the homeowner have to take those measures to try to knock out the insects? Or let me just say.
Yeah, I don't think we should strap the homeowner to then treat for insects or, or a disease. You know, before they can take, if the tree's dying because of those two items, chances are there might be more than one tree with, with those two items. So I, I couldn't see saying, yes, treat the tree, you know?
Well, didn't we have, weren't ponds dying pretty rapidly a few years ago from some?
Yeah.
Pine beetle.
Pine beetle, yes.
I mean, that would be an example of, you know, taking down trees that, that, you know, had, you know, insects in them that could be treatable if you took down two or three that were identified and then. But I'm not sure that this ordinance is really too worried about a tree in the middle of your lot.
No.
It, it is more concerning, you know, a more imminent emergency of a tree that looks like it's going to fall at any time on your house or your neighbor's property. And I think that what we're seeing here hits that pretty well. And then number in, you know, number two on line 41, 40 and 41, it says, in the case of a tree emergency, designing administrator is hereby authorized to, at that point, make his or her call. And I think it gives some latitude to the, you know, designing administrator to make that decision if it's not black and white. I don't know.
Wes, what's entailed in a stormwater management permit?
So currently in the commercial zoning district, if somebody wants to remove trees greater than four and a half inches. Greater than six inches in diameter, measured at four and a half feet above the ground within a front, side or rear yard on any unimproved lot in the commercial zoning district, it requires a lot disturbance stormwater management permit. In all zoning or, and also if someone wants to develop a lot, not just tree removal in the commercial zoning district, but in the residential zoning district right now, as it stands, a lot disturbance stormwater management permit is required whenever someone makes any changes to the grade or topography of a lot, whether or not their development proposed or not. And they have to submit, the ordinance requires that they submit a survey that shows the, and it's, it's all spelled out right in there. But essentially, if you have a vacant lot and you want to alter the grade of topography, that's what requires a lot disturbance stormwater management.
But you could, you could get that same lot disturbance stormwater management permit and take every single tree out on that lot. And leave the stump up two feet. And you've jumped through the hood. Yeah, you, you've gone and gotten a lot disturbance stormwater permit. You have to bring in a survey. You have to have a site plan of sorts for you to issue that permit. But you don't have to have a contract to build a house on said property.
Currently in the commercial district for removal of trees, they could obtain a lot disturbance stormwater management permit to remove every tree. And currently in the residential zoning district, they are not, there is no lot disturbance stormwater management permit required to remove a tree or trees unless it involves altering the grade or topography as a result of removal of those trees.
But in order to keep someone from coming in and cutting down every tree on their lot saying they're going to build in six months, and six months turns into six years. There's, I can tell you a couple of them. One was right at the split of the road on North Dogwood Trail. Just riding by there today. Whoever the builder is there went in and took a whole lot of trees down. And now it's just big clumps of weeds and stuff. And it's been, I don't know, at least a year, year and a half since that occurred.
But they could have done that today under this with just a permit application, right?
I mean, did they get a lot disturbance?
No, I mean, I, I, no, I mean, under this.
No, it's what are we doing to?
Right. They could have just applied for a permit. They wouldn't have had to really incur.
What type of permit? Lot disturbance stormwater permit.
Correct, right.
Yeah. But what's involved with that permit is a site plan that showed, that basically for Wes, that basically shows the house sit it on the property and a survey, a current survey.
Is that accurate? They have to provide, they have to show a house?
As previously discussed, if there are instances where property owners do not know where they want to locate a house. And they need a lot disturbance permit in order to prepare the lot so they can ascertain whether, where the property, where the house is going to be located on the property. So in those instances, we issue a lot disturbance stormwater management permit. They usually indicate that they will be removing trees with minor grading to make the topography flat after removing the trees. In that case, then they, and then, and in those cases, they also, they do have to provide a survey and some sort of what improvements they plan on doing. Like they plan on removing the trees in these locations and flattening out the topography. But the most important part are spot elevations, but it's what the ordinance requires. The elevation, it says the elevations at the corners of the proposed structure. But if they don't know where the house is going to be located, we require spot elevation shown on the survey. Once they have obtained that first lot disturbance stormwater management permit, remove trees, done the necessary grading, then they have another survey submitted where they actually show everything, a house, a driveway, parking spaces, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and again, I don't have a vote obviously tonight, but you know, the same concerns I raised before. And frankly, my opinion is that I don't think it goes far enough. But the issue with it is that I think it throws up just bureaucracy and it doesn't really accomplish anything.
I think it keeps people from getting a lot disturbance stormwater permit and going in and defoliating, cutting every single tree down on that lot. And they could do that. And these, because you can't, you can't disturb the property. You can't take that root ball up. And I think I explained that pretty well in what I sent you all.
Right, except when they get the permit though, they can do it and then the tree's gone. But that's the goal is to preserve trees, but it doesn't really do that.
It keeps the process of, of building a house and cutting down trees. It makes people more serious about cutting trees down. I, I feel for Mark Martin and Mr. LeBlanc. And I'm a builder or was, I'm, I'm not doing it anymore. And I've, I've had built houses in the middle of the woods and I understand the problems involved in trying to figure out where that house is going to sit. But once you get a lot disturbance stormwater management permit, caddy bar the door, you can go in and take down every single tree and not.
But how can you do that in a setback? You still have the.
You still can't do it in the setback.
The setbacks, you take a lot and you go draw in your setbacks, right? Say, okay, all of them's inside those setback lines.
With a lot disturbance permit, you can take down all the trees.
Yeah.
Well, what's the point of that?
What?
Why would you have, what, what's the point in setbacks then? If a guy can come in right at the beginning and just, just clear.
It's only the building setback.
Yeah.
I mean, this. That's as far as you can go.
Yeah.
A lot across the street from me, the owners chose to come in and they took down every tree from lot line to lot line and level to lot. It's, it's their, it's their property and it's their choice. I don't get it either. It's like the young lady said, it's like, why you want to build a house here?
And I don't think we're the only community that has faced this. I mean, there is a way and we just have to keep looking at how we can focus on getting the people who are building happy with the thought that they're moving into a maritime forest and that the trees are to be protected and that we, you know, can understand that they want to build and give them the wherewithal to build the property as far as the lot, but also not a clear cut. You know, in other words, trying to do it so that everybody's happy, so that we keep the aesthetic look that we have and still be able to, you know, build homes. And I agree with Mike Stone, trees grow quickly. However, you can't take down old, old trees and expect that you're going to get the height and the width and the breadth. And not only that, with storms, all these old trees protect each other. And if we start clearing out a number of trees from different lots, we're going to see more storm damage because we don't have the natural canopy that we have. And, you know, so maybe there's an education that goes along with this, that people understand, you know, the oak trees and the big pine trees, they all bend in the wind and they all protect each other.
I've been beating my head on a wall with this for 20 years now. Here's something that, that's a thought. When they get a lot disturbance permit and they want to place where they want to build a house. Okay, four corners. You can't build the house within the setback. So why not maintain the setback area until construction begins? Now, I understand when some construction, you have to go into that, maybe take something down just for equipment, et cetera purposes. But not permitted and to go into those setback areas until the actual construction begins. Because, you know, if somebody comes now and gets that permit, stormwater management, they can come in and clear the whole thing. And we will have examples. Duckwood Drive had a place for 15 years that was clear cut. I think they put some kind of chemical down. So why not maintain that? Okay, you can get a, a stormwater lot disturbance permit, but you still can't take down the setback areas until construction. At least it'll save it for a while and maybe they'll maintain it because they can't build into them. So why, why are you taking them down?
Wes, what, what, what generated the initial language in this ZTA as far as commercial situation goes? But what was the genesis for town council wanting to have some type of ordinance for trees in setbacks?
For having trees in setbacks?
In the commercial zone. But the genesis of this ZTA, starting with number four and going down in the ZTA.
So initially.
So initially, it was February 6, 2024, town council meeting. The council directed staff to draft town code amendments to modernize the town code. The April 9, 2024, council meeting, the council adopted ZTA 2402, which established the current requirements in the commercial zoning district.
Which, can you read those requirements or, I mean, I? In 2402?
Starting with number four. In addition to the provisions above, in the general commercial district, no removal of trees greater than six inches in diameter measured at four and a half feet above the ground within a front, side, or rear yard setback on any unimproved lot shall be undertaken prior to the issuance of a lot disturbance stormwater management permit issued by the zoning administrator, followed by A, B, and C were enforced.
And that, that was in ZTA 2402?
That's what was adopted in '02.
Yeah. And, and on April 9, the town council meeting. And what was that in reaction to as far as the town council?
Well, like I said, if the town council had directed staff to draft amendments to modernize the town code, so that was one of the reasons. Then also following a special use permit application for development on a lot in the commercial zoning district in which buffers were a big, big discussion you all recall.
That would be the property that Saga owns?
Correct.
On the way out of town?
Correct.
Okay. So that was the genesis of this whole ZTA coming forward with, and town council was fine with it in the commercial zone?
Correct.
What I maintain is that what's good for the commercial zone in the setbacks is good for the residential zone. And that's in here, that language is in here, and we beat it around and beat it around, but that language is in here. It was taken out by town council after we asked for the language to be put in. And it's back in here. And I certainly think that town council needs to reexamine taking that out, and I'm sure they will when they get this ZTA.
Well, the, the only difference, though. So in commercial property, they can't now remove the trees without a permit. But they can't get that permit without site plan review.
Correct.
So those trees can be evaluated to be preserved when, when we're looking at a site plan review application. So it may be that those trees that they can't remove because they can't get a permit can never be removed. Except for residential, that's not the case. So.
So do you ask for a site plan with residential?
I, I'm, I'm suggesting that if the goal is to preserve trees, that this is not the right vehicle to do it. We're just telling people, let, let me finish real quick. We're just telling people that you can't remove that tree without a permit, and then we're going to make you jump through hoops. So it costs you more money to go do the thing that you want to do and that you can do with the permit that you're going to be given. There's no evaluation of whether or not, you know, it's a, that's a tree of any value. That tree is going to be, as long as they get the permit, it's gone. And we're just saying, well, you know, kind of a wink and a nod, you can do it. It's going to cost you more money, and we're going to throw up a roadblock to do it. And I think that's poor government. My opinion.
Can I go back to what I was trying to explain? And I, I think number four, where you have, in addition to the provisions above, no removal of trees greater than six inches in diameter measured in four and a half feet above ground within the front side and rear yard setbacks on an unimproved lot shall be undertaken. And I think instead of saying prior to the issuance of a lot disturbance, prior, prior to the building permit, the lot disturbance, they can still get a lot disturbance permit. They can cut everything down except the setbacks until, that's my opinion, until they, they request a building permit. Because at least you'll still maintain that, because so many times, as we have seen, they come in and clear everything down, and nobody builds anything on it. And so what, what, you know, what are you doing? At least this will maintain it until a, an actual building permit is issued. And that kind of keeps the integrity of what we're talking about, rather than clear cutting the whole thing and then walking away for three years, five years.
Well, the.
Just a thought.
The notion that it was brought forward for a buffer in a noted situation in a, that was in a mixed-use group development special use permit. It, it, it alarmed the town that, that we didn't have any buffer restriction on trees in the setback. And to me, having it in the residential is also a buffer until people get a little bit more serious about building a house and getting a lot disturbance permit and stormwater, because along with that, you have to provide a survey and a site plan. And that's what the ordinance says on the, um, the permit itself. I see nothing wrong with, with requiring it to happen prior to taking down trees that are six inches in diameter, four and a half feet above the ground. I don't know. But I will say that watching the town council meeting on YouTube, August 6, this is in what I sent you all. I said, I was struck by multiple references to a tree ordinance by council members and Mr. Duke Garrity from ABX Home Builders. What you passed, and I'm writing this to town council, what you passed in ZT 20, ZTA 2404 is not a standalone tree ordinance in any way, shape, or form. It is a requirement within our lot disturbance stormwater management permit. According to Dave Owens, UNC School of Government, Mr. Garrity is incorrect in stating that we are not allowed legislatively to have tree cutting restrictions within this permitting process. And I said, and, and the next sentence down in what I sent you all, I said, I'm not advocating for any standalone tree ordinance. I agree when someone purchases a residential lot, they have the absolute right to remove any or all of the trees on their lot. Requiring a lot disturbance stormwater management permit for residential tree removal within the setback adds a layer of commitment to the lot development process. And it does. I think Mark Martin would agree with that, that, that his client would be a little bit more serious about starting to take trees down in the setback with a survey and a site plan that he's going to have to spend some money on. And you got to get a lot disturbance stormwater, you know, permit in the building permit process. So this keeps people honest as far as coming in and taking out a ton of trees in the setback.
So I think the setbacks ought to be preserved as a no man's land.
I, I don't agree with that, but because you may have a god awful ugly tree in, on your, you know, right there on the property line. I mean, what do we do about that? I, I just think we do it, the best we can do, we're not trying to create a lot, I mean, a standalone tree ordinance with this ZTA at all. It, it's just protecting, just like the commercial is protected, the residential should be protected in the setback areas. Anyway, my two cents worth, but.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Chairman, if you all would like for us to revisit or schedule another discussion with you all about potential changes, I would just, we would just request that at least the tree emergency exception part be kept so that it applies to the commercial district.
Now, I would, I would boo to, to accept this ZTA as written with Michael's corrections or additions. And if you could restate that one more time.
So it was 1A, a tree has become an imminent danger or hazard to persons or property due to damage to the tree resulting from fire, motor vehicle accident, or natural occurrence such as, and then I think you add there, lightning, windstorm, ice storm, flood, uh, disease.
Disease and insect.
And then under natural occurrence, that's where you put insects.
That would be natural.
Yeah, just add those.
Okay.
To the list.
Yeah. You getting that, Wes?
Yes, sir.
And any, anything else that would need to be added to or taken out of in the emergency tree removal? I think it's pretty comprehensive. And it, it, I think it effectuates what the town council was looking for as far as, you know, the overall gist of being able to take down a tree in an emergency without jumping through all these, uh, these hoops. But I would, I would make a motion that we approve with these additions, ZTA 2405 as written. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tony. Any discussion before the vote?
Yeah, comment. Um, I agree, this is, this is not a perfect solution. And I, and I don't like the idea of adding hoops. But I, I do have to think if the lot next door to me was completely wooded, somebody bought it, they were thinking about building a house, but they weren't really ready to commit. So the only thing they wanted to do was come in and cut down some trees, which is pretty common. It would be really great if they would leave a little breathing room until they get it figured out. Because I've seen quite a few people that don't have an appreciation for the ecosystem services that a mature tree creates. And it's true, they grow fast, but the services that a, that a mature tree provides, the environment is infinitely much greater than a new tree will be for 10, 15, 20 years. And so I support it for that reason, so that people would go in lightly, take some trees down in the buildable area, take them all down, for that matter. Do you figure out what you're going to do? And if you know what you're going to do, then go ahead and get your lot disturbance permit and take them all down. You know, that's your right. But if you're going to go in and start trimming trees and just cutting them down, uh, just and not disturbing the root balls, just because you're trying to figure out what's going on, or you've got a diseased one or something like that, I, I think this, this will make you stop and think a little bit. You're either going to get your stuff together and go ahead and get your, your, um, your lot disturbance permit, or you're going to send somebody in to take some trees down enough so that you can figure out what's going on, what the lay of the land is. Um, and I've seen a whole lot of folks that don't take that level of due diligence. I'd also like to say that something Mr. LeBlanc brought up about fire safety principles and how much brush and underbrush that we have and all ties back to what Mr. Stone said. Stuff grows really quickly. You know, the birds drop seeds, it, you know, we create a lot of underbrush, and there may be some fire hazards that, you know, we, perhaps we should look into. I don't know. But anyway, that's why I will support it, not because I think it's the end all and be all, and I don't like the extra red tape or the extra step. But I'd rather people go a little slower.
Jan, I mean, I mean, we've got a motion in a second on the floor, discussion.
No, I, I mean, you know, our agreement, and we're basically looking at the setback area versus somebody in their own detached home inside. They're fine with those trees.
This, this isn't a tree ordinance.
Right.
No. And we'll, we'll have a very hard time ever getting a tree ordinance in Southern Georgia, but this is.
I think this just, you know, meets it 50/50 in the sense of, you know, hey, you know, stand to take attention to that. We're trying to protect. No, I'm agreeing.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Ed, any? Okay, motion, second. All in favor of the motion to accept ZTA 2405 as written with minor corrections? Uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay. Moving on. Item nine, um, public comment. Anybody here that hasn't signed up? If you'll state your name and.
Yes, Anthony Mina. I am the applicant from the variance that you were discussing earlier today, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You are 100% correct. Uh, before you get going, you can talk on anything you want to. Three minutes. And it's not going to be any back and forth. You're more than welcome to talk about the weather, potholes, taxes, whatever you want to talk about. But it's not back and forth. It's three minute public comment, all yours.
Thank you. Well, the reason I'm here is because I was watching the live stream of your variance decision being decided on. And I wanted to make sure that you understood something. My name's Anthony Mina. I'm applicant and homeowner of 75 East Dogwood Trail. Wes Haskett is on the record stating the property owner is somebody other than me. I paid $105,000 down on the property. I'm not sure who he's identifying as the property owner. I've actually had problems with refinancing the house and the old property owner speaking with the mortgage company. And all of a sudden, a loan that I refinanced was approved to refinance the house wasn't available to me. So I'm not sure who Wes Haskett is claiming the property owner is, stating that it's different than applicant, but I am the same person. So I wanted to correct the record that, in that matter, I have documentation that I own the property, and it's in public records. So I have no idea what he's talking about right there. And I just wanted to let you know that the way the public interprets, interprets town code section 36362B is that they're going to receive notice when their property is affected by zoning ordinance being changed by your meetings here. That's not happening, and Wes Haskett is falsifying reports stating that it is happening. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that the public expects to know when their property is going to have code changes to it. And they interpret the code to mean that they will receive a mailed letter to them where a posted notice at their property, which is not happening. And then you're coming here and all agreeing on the same lies that it did happen. So I wanted to just get that out there and make sure you understand where I'm coming from with my unhappiness and my appeals and all the other things. I appreciate your taking the time to consider my variance, and you have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mina.
Thank you.
Don't forget your code.
Any others in the audience that want to go back at it again?
Good evening again, Mark Martin, 191 Wax Myrtle Trail. Just to give you a little perspective of what we do.
Just to give you a little perspective of what we do, I don't sign a contract with a client until I know what we're doing with the property, meaning how many trees are coming out, what the topography is. A lot of times, we're developing a site plan, we're going through the whole nine yards. Most of the time, what I'll do, if it's heavily wooded, is do a, get a lot disturbance permit or call Wes and say, hey, I'm going to bush hog this lot up here. We're going to go in from there and get all the topos, figure out which trees we're going to save, and get an idea where we're going to put the house and start that whole process. So I have never probably built, I don't know, 80 houses in Southern Shores. I've never clear cut it a lot. So we don't really have that issue. So we're always designing around the features of the lot, taking the topography, dealing with the stormwater and all of that sort of stuff. The neighbors, we're talking to the neighbors and trying to figure that out. I have seen over the years, you know, two or three, four, five places where they've clear cut it, filled it, and it's usually because somebody told them, something's coming down the pike and they're getting ready to stop you. So they go out and do something. We're going to, we're going to start talking about a tree ordinance or we're going to start talking about a field ordinance, and then that's what they do. I don't know why a few people have gone out, and I'm not sure why they'd even do it, and clear cut a lot without there being, and not build on it without there being some sort of hardship other than they were afraid that something was going to happen to them and preclude them from building. So I'm just not sure I understand the need for all of that. But, you know, through the process, I mean, Wes can tell you, there was one, we've had, somebody said, oh, you clear cut the lot. Well, the lot was completely grassed over. The only thing we cut down was a dead pine tree and a bunch of vines and brush all around it to get the septic in. So the other part I wanted to talk to you a minute about is the setback. You can put the house right on the setback, but if there's a tree two feet off that setback line or building line, you got to get that tree out of there. You got to be able to go around the house. You got to be able to grade that. You can actually take your septic within 10 feet of the property line. So that's five more feet into that septic. And a lot of times, we still have to do that. So there's a lot of stuff that goes into trying to design around trees and stormwater and everything. So just wanted to kind of give you a perspective of what we're going through every time we meet with a client.
Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate it.
And I will, I will add that you are certainly a well-respected builder in this town, but there are some people that might not share your enthusiasm for what you do. So thank you.
That's true.
Mr. Stone?
All right, Mark, just speak to a point that as a property owner, it makes just about every property owner feel like, when they hear that they can't cut the trees down on their property, it gets me inside, do I go out there and bush hog, not bush hog, but cut every one of those bitches down or just the property lines? So excuse the language a little bit, but, but talking about trees and maritime forests and, you know, I've been hearing people talk about maritime forests all the time. Yes, we are maritime forests. But go back and take a look at the aerial photos, the ground level photos of Southern Shores back in the 70s, and, you know, pick it up to 80. And then look at, look at aerial photo of right now. There's at least twice the vegetation in Southern Shores now that was here in 1980. And there's probably triple or more the number of houses. I didn't go out there and count, so I don't know if it's three or four times the number of houses that were here in 1980. The forest actually, everything grew next to the ocean because of all the houses, because it blocked the salt air. That's the reason that everything from the ocean to the top of the dune was sand, which you all should already know that. But what I'm saying is, you get someone that comes in, okay, they cleared a lot a little bit, or a lot. They build their house, they've got some vegetation in there, it's going to grow, it's going to heal, and it's going to fill, fill back in. The same way if you go out and you cut yourself. It's going to, it's going to grow, heal, and fill back in. It's not like you're going to protect every, have to protect everything 100%, 100% of the time. You've got to have some give there for things to happen and for people to do what they want to with their property. I mean, I've heard it for years, growing up as a little kid, I even thought it was stupid. I've had, I was one that was able to hear all these people go, how dare someone let someone else build on my street? In this case, it was Duckwood Drive. And, no, how dare them let somebody build next to me? I mean, I heard that a lot back in the 70s and 80s. And I'm looking at it, it's just other people trying to tell somebody else what to do with the land. Now, if someone builds a house, whatever's around it is going to heal over time. I mean, I've got trees that grew 12 feet in two years, and I'm trying to run a bush hog over the top of them on another piece of property. And trees will grow very quickly and naturally.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Blanc?
Another bite at apple.
This is great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
One little wrinkle in here, I would point direct the, your attention to the NC invasive plant council for a list of trees which are considered invasive on the coastal plains. And your emergency regulation might consider removing those trees. The other thing I'd say is there seems to be policy a bit by anecdote so that members of the board say, I've, there's this lot near me, and they cleared it five years ago, and it's, I don't know what they did, there's a lot next to me. It's completely overgrown. It's full of Russian olive, which as we know is an incredibly invasive species. It would probably be better for our topography if all of that was cleared out. The other thing is, is that I'm told my neighbor, the first house on 9th Avenue supposedly, I don't know this, but I was told that in 1970, this house was built at the intersection of 10th Avenue and 12, and they could see all the way to the, to the dune. Now it's trees all the way up there. So as Mr. Stone, I believe, said, I don't believe, I think this is a solution in search of a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trees grow fast, all right. I like trees. I don't, I didn't live here in 1980.
Thank you, all of you. We're listening, but. Okay. We have moved through public comment twice. Planning Board member comments is next on the agenda. I'll start down this way. Michael?
No, no comments. Maybe just for awareness that I was appointed to the entry corridor committee along with Wes and some others, but not sure what will come from that.
Well, good appointment. I'm glad you're there. Thank you. Jan?
No, I'm good.
I don't have anything. Ed?
We had spoken before about quantifying the canopy in Southern Shores. I think we ought to, I'd like to see that pushed back up to be considered as find out who could, what agency, government agency probably could quantify the canopy as it exists today, just as a point of reference going forward.
Robert?
The only thing I'd like to say is the corridor committee, I'm just happy that we don't have light poles all the way down the hallway because.
We're used to it.
We can't, we can't put, we won't be putting flags. Not that you would do that anymore.
We could bring light poles back.
Not that you would do it.
Okay, I've got one thing that I don't think you all got copied on, but I would like to get Wes to send this memo to all planning board from, it was from Cliff dated August 6th about the ATUs. And I met with Cliff and the mayor, Mayor Protem and myself, and we knock around some different ideas and concepts and stuff. But this, this memo that Cliff sent out on August the 6th to the town council, planning board needs to be copied on it. Outside of that, that's all I've got. Have you got any announcements, Wes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the, your next meeting in December is scheduled, next regular meeting is scheduled for December 16th, and we may have a zoning text amendment, draft zoning text amendment for you all to consider that would address the recombination of non-conforming lots. You all, we do have an ordinance in place that requires it in certain situations, and we may have some modernizing for you all to consider. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, Tony?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
It's only 6:20.